Good morning. I will call the meeting to order for the September fifteenth, September, hang on a second, September fifteenth Wycomico County Council Legislative Session. For those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy coming will be done on earth as it is in heaven. For it is so sacred, and it is so trespassing, as we forgive those who trespass against us. It is not temptation, but the personal evil. Thy coming, my power, and we pray for ever. Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands on the nation, in the God, in the wisdom, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin the legislative session, we have two very important proclamations that we would like to present. And for that presentation, we have with us today the County Executive Bob Culver and Director of Administration Wayne Strasburg. Gentlemen, I will open the floor to you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, appreciate it very much. This is one that everybody would love to present. On behalf of Wycomico County, I guess, Pam, you want to come up here and accept this? We would like to proclaim that October is, I guess, that's the way to say it, how we want to, the partnership between all of us, but it's going to be Good Beer Festival in October. So what we want to do is Craft Beer Movement, and we want to proclaim this Craft Beer Month, okay? So on behalf of Wycomico County, County Council and County Executive, we would like to proclaim Craft Beer Movement continues to gain momentum both nationally and on local level. There are three breweries in which Wycomico County is called home. That's Evolution Craft Brewing, Tall Tales, Rubber Soul, and they join more than a dozen other breweries on the Eastern Shore. A national partnership has been formed among the shores breweries and complementary businesses to promote the Eastern Shore of Maryland as craft beer destination. The breweries positively impact our local job market, our agricultural growth, and our tourism. So on behalf of Wycomico County, Wycomico County Executive would like to declare the month of October as Shore Craft Beer Month in order to join and promote craft beer and brewing business within our county. So on behalf of, of course, I'd like to give this to you.
Thank you very much. Just on behalf of Wreckin Parks, we would like to say that Good Beer Festival is October 10th and 11th, and please come out and enjoy Shore Craft Beer Month and the Good Beer Festival out at Pemberton Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Strasburg, good morning.
Good morning. I'm pleased to be here, and I'm extremely honored to make this presentation. With us from the Department of Corrections is our Director, George Caloramakis, if you could come forward, our Deputy Director, Chris Tyler, Correctional Officers Alan Parish and Brittany Stevenson. I'll read this proclamation. Whereas the Wycomico County Department of Corrections is audited on a three-year cycle by the Maryland Commission on Correctional Standards, the MCCS, this year on July 14th through 17N, whereas the findings of this audit committee are submitted to the State Commission for Adoption and Consideration, and whereas the audit report commented on how well-prepared administration and staff was, that the staff and inmates were very prideful of the sanitation and cleanliness of the facility, and that the staff is committed and dedicated to the use of correct standards in their operation, and whereas the Department of Corrections is recommended to receive the recognition of achievement award from the audit committee, now therefore be it resolved that Wycomico County citizens should recognize the diligent, hard work that the Corrections has provided to the community they serve in consideration of the fiscal challenges the county has faced in the last three years. This accomplishment reflects most positively on the management of the department and our team of professional correctional employees. I should point out that I missed a paragraph. It says, whereas the MCCS alerted county officials that the Department of Corrections was found 100% in compliance with all standards for an adult detention center for the first time in the department's history, which is an incredible accomplishment, and I congratulate everyone associated with the detention center on an absolutely superb performance. I know you have a few words.
President Cannon, Council members, County Executive Culver, and members of the community that are here, it's obviously an honor and privilege to be here before you today to recognize the outstanding work of your employees at the detention center, the Department of Corrections. A little-known fact, we're the sixth-largest local correctional facility, and that's including Baltimore City. So we have a big task on our hands as a department and the number of people that we process and detain and try to help on the road to a law-abiding life. This was the first time in my career I've been in an institution where we were able to receive 100% on the first round of the audit, and it's truly a milestone for the department that we've now set the bar so we know we have to continue to function at that level. But I have to certainly recognize the hard work of our team, all the employees, but it takes a skillful and experienced team to present the information, have it all available, have it ready for the auditors when they come in. I think we had seven auditors. We had seven auditors from around the state to come in and evaluate our procedures, our policies, and check for compliance. Under Ms. Tyler's direction, Deputy Director, we have Mr. Parish with 22, 23 years' experience with the department, a very dedicated employee, has worked in a lot of capacities there and has done an outstanding job. And he's tutoring Officer Stevenson, so we'll always have a good, strong backup and somebody to take the lead in the future. So with that, again, on behalf of the department, we thank you for the recognition, and I just want to, again, personally thank the great people I work with for their outstanding dedication and performance.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve legislative minutes from September 1st, 2015. Second?
Second.
You'll note the minutes which have the green marking on it as the ones that have been amended by Mr. Kramer?
Yes, Mr. President, there's only, only one substantive change, and that is at the bottom of page three, the minutes that you have show that Mr. Hall both made the motion and seconded the motion to introduce legislative bill 2015-13, and that correction has been made so that it was Mr. Dodd and Mr. Hall. The others are not significant.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Any questions or comments, corrections from council members? All those in favor of the minutes approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes have been approved. Morning, Ms. Kramer.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. The first resolution for your consideration is number 141-2015 at the request of the County Executive confirming the appointment of Mike Delano to the Wycomico County Youth and Civic Center Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 141-2015.
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolutions approved.
Next resolution is number 142-2015 at the request of the County Executive confirming the appointment of Dr. Michael Peters to the Annual Animal Appeals Board.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 142-2015.
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 143-2015 at the request of the County Executive confirming the reappointment of Jack Elliott to the Animal Appeals Board.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 143-2015.
Submove.
Second?
Second.
We have a second? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Resolution Number 144-2015 is the request of the Executive confirming the reappointment of Diane Spalding to the Animal Appeals Board.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 144-2015.
Submove.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Resolution Number 145-2015 is the request of the Executive confirming the reappointment of Captain Todd Richardson to the Animal Appeals Board.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 145-2015.
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Captain Richardson, you're here.
He's here for something else, too.
Okay. I thought maybe it's...
He's sweating.
All those in favor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Congratulations.
Resolution Number 146-2015 at the request of the Executive to authorize the Executive to accept a grant in the amount of $6,000 from the Wycomico County Circuit Court, a drug-drug treatment court, for law enforcement officers to conduct compliance checks for participants in the adult drug court program, and to authorize the Executive to execute a memorandum of agreement. And Captain Todd Richardson is here to answer any questions you may have.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 146-2015.
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Captain, if you would, thank you. Nice to have you here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Captain Todd Richardson, Wycomico County Sheriff's Office.
Sir, could you just give us a brief overview?
This is some additional monies that became available that are not within the budget that were previously set aside to do home visits for the drug program, drug court program. This just allows us to do more visits during the fiscal, federal, or the federal fiscal year.
Any questions?
I guess I have a question about this. So this is, you're going in people's homes and kind of spot checking to make sure they're compliant?
Correct.
Is this typically done by law enforcement? I mean, or do other counties have court personnel to do it?
We sometimes have other personnel attend with us, whether they're the drug counselors or whatever, but predominantly a police officer comes because if there's drug paraphernalia in the house, if there's drugs in the house, there's going to be an immediate rearrest and brought back off the program.
Yeah, that was, I have a similar question, too, because maybe parole probation might be involved in it, but this is sort of an added security?
Yes.
All right. It's a good program.
Yes.
Very beneficial program. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of Resolution 146-2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Resolution Number 147-2015 at the request of the Executive declaring that David and Dawn Brown are eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 1121 South Salisbury Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland. And the threshold of eligibility for enterprise designation is improvements of at least $50,000. In this case, the improvements to the property thus far exceeds a quarter of a million, $250,000,
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 147-2015.
Submove.
Second? And a second. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 147-2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, resolution passes.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Roser?
Yes, sir, I have a brief introduction.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Roser, and I'm your internal auditor. I would like to introduce to the council and the executive Dean Willie. He will be joining the office of the internal auditor this semester as an intern. He is a student, I believe a senior?
Yes.
At the Purdue School of Business in Salisbury. He was recommended by Dr. Keaton, and he will be joining us part-time through the semester, through December, to help with some number crunching and all the other fun things that we do in the office of the internal auditor, and we would like to welcome him and thank him for his willingness to do it.
Yeah. It is a county tradition for the intern to speak publicly for the council. Congratulations, glad to have you with us.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you, Mr. Roser. At this time on the agenda, with council's permission, because it's 10:15 and we cannot continue with the public hearings until 10:30, we have 15 minutes to avoid a recess, I would like to, with council's permission, to move the executive plan for county employees in reference to mentoring from the open work session scheduled after the public hearing and the comments to, on to the agenda item currently.
Is the motion required?
No.
Okay.
If we could, I know the executive is here and the county administrator. If you could, well, we're going to move forward with this. We also have a special guest, Mr. Mark Thompson, who we all know is spearheading mentoring on the Eastern Shore and doing a great job with it. How are you?
Good.
Glad you could make it.
Thank you.
Well, this will take us back to some of the roundtables that the Chamber of Commerce has been having over the summer months, and actually it was one that you and I were there on the Education Department.
Right.
During that meeting, we, we heard how much mentoring was needed in Wycomico County.
So... Sorry.
When we got back, you and I discussed it, and what I thought, to show that we care about our students, care about our children in Wycomico County, and the fact that we have got skin in the game as far as wanting to see our students' graduation rate improve, I contacted Mr. Thompson and talked to him about what effect it would have if we were able to provide more mentors. And what I learned was that because of the mentoring program, the graduation rate would pick up so much within Wycomico County. And as you know, right now, I think we're about 80% graduation rate. My goal as county executive to see us try to get closer to 90%, and it's, it's a lofty goal, but we've got to work on it. So in order to show that we care and we want to put our money where our mouth is, I came back and helped try to develop a plan with Michelle here to decide what we could do. So what we've come up with is to ask anyone that works for Wycomico County if they would like to mentor. That would be fine with, with our department. They would not be docked for the paytime that they would be mentoring. It's about an hour a week, 45-minute session, but we figure 15, 20 minutes. So about an hour a week that an employee could go over to the school system, then there's three or four different ways. Some of them they do lunch, some of them they do breakfast, some of them they actually do mentoring and classroom subjects. So, but I, I would like for Mark to tell you a little bit more about what that is that would be entailed, if you could.
Well, good morning, Mr. President and council members. This is such an exciting program that we're starting and implementing, and I thank County Executive Culver for, for spearheading this. Let me just preface this by saying this. No one ever complains when we spend $25,000 a year for inmates to be incarcerated, but when we talk about $10 or $50 a week, then we complain about that working with children. We're saying for that small amount of money, we can provide almost about 600 more additional employees or mentors into a Wycomico County public school system. And this year, we're doing something unique. We're calling it à la carte mentoring, meaning that we're going to have more than just the traditional one-on-one mentoring. What we're going to do this year to make it available for everyone to participate, à la carte mentoring, meaning we're going to start off with, you can pick whichever program you choose to do. We're partnering with the Fuel Up Take Place 60 program, which is about creating physical fitness and getting our kids more healthy and eating nutritious foods, which goes into the line of their performance in school academically when they're, when they come to school and they eat right, and they're also physically fit. So what we're going to do is start off with having a breakfast mentoring, where you can come in in the morning, President Cannon, you can stop by one of the elementary schools in the morning and drink some milk with, with our students to show them how to drink and role model proper eating for the morning breakfast. We can, I can see Councilmember Davis come in and eat salad at lunchtime. I mean, we can't see it, but we can see him coming in, eating salad with the kids at lunchtime, because we have a different lunch menu now. We don't sell those cookies and all the potato chips. Everything's around healthy eating, but we need adults to come in to model healthy eating. So then you could have the Mr. Cannon for breakfast, milk, Mr. Davis come in for afternoon for salad, and then we will have also another part, is we're partnering with the Maryland Business Roundtable, where we have business leaders can come in and talk to a group of students, and this helps with our graduation rate, about making sure you take advanced math, English. Here's how I became an executive. Here's how I became in my business. Here's what I did in school. So you can talk to a classroom, we'll give you all the materials, we'll be with you, so you won't feel alone, but you can come into a school, mentor at a group session, 25 students in a class, to encourage them to continue with their education, stay in Salisbury, another pitch for Salisbury, stay in Salisbury, attend our local colleges, and this is what that's going to be. And then the fourth option is our traditional one-on-one mentoring, where you'll come in, you'll be assigned with one student, and you'll mentor them no more than an hour a week, and that's all we ask for. But again, mentoring makes a difference, and you'll see, the more people we can get into our school system, to see what we're dealing with, to see the children from broken homes, to see the, the students, even when they're at good homes, they need somebody to encourage them and tell them they can continue on with their education. So again, with this excellent partnership, I think, with the county, we're expanding this, I'm going to meet with a new mayor and expand this to the city. The state's attorney, Matt Messarello, has, has committed to all the state's attorneys being mentoring. We have Chief Duncan with the Salisbury City Police that's going in, and we're also having the Sheriff's Department come in. We want to get at least 1,000 mentors this year. When we have a waiting list of about 700, we see that we need mentors really for all 14,000 of our students, and this is a big step to, to that partnership. So again, I think it's just a small cost. Again, I have to preface, we never complain about incarcerating people in jail system. Why don't we step up and just spend this a small price to work with our students to encourage them to stay in school?
Very good. You know, I had, I always thought that mentoring, probably till the first time I heard you speak, I always thought that mentoring was actually one-on-one teaching children, like sitting down with them with homework or subject, subject matter, but you're saying it's not all of that, it's, it's a wide variety?
It's a wide variety, and there is that traditional one-on-one mentoring where you just sit down, you talk to them, encourage them to stay in school, sign off on their homework. But we understand that we're living in a different time, and we have different students, and we need to expand our, our reach on how we have people, adults, and it's part of the 40 developmental assets. When we talk about asset building, we talk about pairing students, youth, with a caring adult from the community, someone other than their parents, so they'll know that someone cares about them other than their parents, and that's what this is all about.
Okay.
And just to kind of fulfill that promise, what I want to tell you, I brought Michelle in here so she can answer any questions. We're not talking about making this, somebody take it out of their leave time. This will be given by the county. So if John, if you were to go mentor or have lunch or breakfast with John Cannon, it wouldn't be taken out of your, your time, so it would be part of your, or your leave, it would be actually part of the commitment the county would like to do. So, I mean, I appreciate the council working with us on this. I'd hope to bring the city into it at the same time, but they weren't quite ready at this point in time, so we'll go ahead and work on that later. But meanwhile, like I said, if you've got any questions, Michelle, please feel free to add.
I guess it'd be nice to know what the breakdown is as far as how we follow proper procedures. That, that's important to us.
Okay. I looked at other local agencies mentoring policies, and we developed one, a simple policy that aligns with our leave policies now, which allows for 35 hours, including travel, to mentor, and this is follow-ups from conversations with the Board of Education based on a 37-week minus often the exam weeks, school year. It requires proof and verification of the mentoring program, of their participation in the program, and actually where they're located to support any travel time to that program. The leave request, it upholds a policy on a two-week notice for leave and allows us to operationally measure, obviously you can't have everybody in all departments leave at once, you have, you can be denied that leave if you operationally cannot handle it in each department, and it upholds our, it upholds the approval process by allowing the employees to know that it is not an entitlement, but you have to do the proper request and scheduling and keep your immediate director and supervisor informed of your mentoring schedule.
Questions? Anyone?
I have a question. How do you, how do you judge whether it's successful or not within the county? And I understand how you do, Mark, and it certainly is worthwhile, I'm sure, to add more people, but how do we determine whether it's effective for the county employees to participate in this program?
If we can lower our, raise our graduation rate, that is certainly one way. The, the point of just us helping kids is another way, you know, just to take away the feel-good part of it, but the fact of it being that we're trying to help...
Are you going to put a time limit on this for county employees? Are you going to do it, or we're going to build this into our budget next year or the next five or 10 years?
Well, as you said, there's 35 hours or 37 hours.
Well, I know, I know we've got time per employee, but I'm saying, is this going to be a perpetual program that we're going to keep in the county that we should budget?
Well, we're going to try to see how it works, you know?
Okay. And, and so that's what we're, what I'm trying to say, how do we determine how it works?
Well, let me answer that one, just to, right now, we have a high rate, and we're one of the third-highest in the, in the state behind Baltimore City and Baltimore County with juveniles and the detention center and referrals. So what we're going to do is after, once we start this, that'll be our baseline, and we have all information now, and then when we match the employees and the students, we'll be, we're going to track the grades, their attendance, we're going to track their conduct in the school, and by that, you'll see a decrease in all those, those levels.
Good. What is the estimated in-kind value to the county for participating in this process? Other words, man-hours times...
First of all, we don't know how many employees it would like to do this.
Yeah.
Second, we don't know, you know, what positions they hold within the county at this point in time.
Okay, I just didn't know if in general, if you were to take an average of, you know, 50 employees, all right, we'll leave it alone. We'll leave it alone. I just, I just thought, I would just like to see what the numbers may or may not be, but I guess we could always revisit that. I'm completely in favor, I just was curious as to...
Well, I think we will be curious, but we'd love to, we have like 600 full-time employees, 900 with part-time, we're just trying to see how many of our employees would love to step up and do it.
Yeah.
So I for one am going to do it.
Yeah, John, there would be a way to track that and to report on that.
Sure.
You know, I, we don't, we really don't know at this point in time, you know, who would volunteer, what positions they hold, but we could certainly do a look back, we could track those hours, come back, present to the council.
Yeah.
These, you know, this is, this is the population of people who mentored, you know, this is the, you know, this is the cost, if you will, to the county, and I think, I think frankly, you'll get good feedback from the employees. If the employees don't feel that they're having a meaningful impact, I, you know, I think that they're going to tell you that. If they feel they are, I think they're going to tell you that as well.
Makes sense. Watson, Doug?
Yeah, I'm on the same thought process as Mr. Hall, I was thinking the same thing. It'd be nice if we had some kind of tracking system in which I believe you're going to formulate it sometime, to come back and give us a progress report. If you see the 1,000 mentors that you're talking about, and you see an increase in the percentage of graduation, that's definitely an improvement, so I look forward to that.
We, we will be able to give you quarterly information, every, and we track that now for our mentors now. At the end of each progress report, we track the performance over when we start the year in each quarter.
Okay. Well, I would, I'd certainly be glad to volunteer, I just don't want to drink the milk in the cafeteria.
In the morning.
How about a cup of coffee or something?
Healthy.
It was a special program where they served pizza.
Or, or water. And then you'll see the food that we're, that they're eating and how much, you know, right now, the children, and you'll see it in our, in our children, they're, they're very inactive, they're not eating properly, and the school system's doing everything they can to promote that, but however, they need more people to come in to show them to model that behavior, and I can see that.
Drink milk, yeah.
We get a billboard. In fact, WMDT has a PSA that's going to be coming out shortly...
Great.
...to encourage... To, um, encourage mentoring. The Greater Salisbury Committee, we're working on getting the business leaders in the, um, Chamber of Commerce to allow, um, the business community to also do the same thing. And we do it for everything, from jury duty, funeral leaves. We, we put our money in everything except our young people most of the time. And again, this is a great opportunity at a low cost to make great benefits.
Yeah. Fantastic. Mr. Kramer?
Just a question. Uh, county employees, uh, enjoy numbers kinds of leave, uh, as provided for in the Personnel Manual. Will, this will mentoring leave become, uh, an amendment to the Personnel Manual? Mr. Strausberg is saying yes, is that the intention?
I would think that we would do that, Matt, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Whatever, uh, whatever you need from here, just let us know, please.
Well, thank you. We thank you for your support for the kids of Wycompo County, so.
It's a great project. Good seeing you again. Take care.
Thank you for moving this out.
Take care, yes. Have a good day.
Good presentation, Mark.
Well, you got your, you got your timeline.
Okay. At this time, we will now go back to the public hearing, it being after 10:30. Um, we have, uh, Deputy County Attorney, Acting Deputy County Attorney Maureen Howarth, and, um, she has a guest that you may introduce, please.
Certainly, with me today is Rachel Harris. She's your Assistant County Attorney.
Great. Good to have you here, Rachel.
Nice to be here.
Hi, Rachel.
We have Resolution 148, 2015. Uh, notices was hereby given in compliance with Chapter 22 of the Wycompo County Code and Local Government Article, Section 10-Dash-312 of the Annotated Code of Maryland, that the Council of Wycompo County will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting in the Council Chambers, Government Office Building, Salisbury, Maryland. On Tuesday, September 15th, 2015, at 10:30 a.m., the Council proposes to lease to SNH Farms, Inc., all that tractor parcel of land situated in the Quantico Elect- Election District of Wycompo County, Maryland, containing 225.18 acres of land, more or less located northwest of Whitehaven Road, as shown on County Tax Map 55, Grid 6, Parcel 128, also known as Pirate's Wharf. The above described property having been offered for bid, and S H and SNH Farms, Inc. being the high bidder. It's now to be leased to SNH Farms at a rental rate of $6,951 for an initial per, period of one year with two additional one-year renewal terms. The rent, the rental for each renewal term shall be negotiated on a yearly basis, and SNH Farms is permitted to use the property for hunting, waterfowl, upland game, and deer.
Thank you, Ms. Howarth. The council now opens the floor, um, to the public for Res- for Resolution 148, 2015. If you have any comments, um, please go to the podium here, state your name. Seeing none, that closes the public hearing. Council like to entertain a motion to approve Resolution 148, 2015.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussions?
What was, uh, being done with this 225 acres prior to this lease?
Leasing it.
It was leased already. It was same purpose?
Generally, yes.
Is that the going price?
It, it, I don't know if it's a going price. I don't know what it was last go-around, but that's what the highest bidder was this time.
That was the bid, okay.
Um, how many bids were there? Do we?
There was one bid. That was the only bid.
Okay. Um, I, I guess I have a question about this, um, Pirate's Wharf land. This is forest land, um, in general, that the county, when did the county purchase this? For what purpose? Why are we leasing land for hunting? I mean, I'm, you know, I'm new here, so I'm both, you know, i- it seems like this should be something maybe that the county doesn't do, in my opinion, but...
This was a farm that was purchased, I would say, probably 10 years ago, 12 years ago?
It's, it's, it's been, it's been on the county rolls for a long period of time, and at this point in time, since the county, um, Pam Olend, Acting Director, sorry, um, Wreckin' Parks, at this point in time, um, the county does not have a park use for it. And so to not just have it sit there, it actually generates revenue. We bid out the hunting rights every, um, every year that the contract is up. This, um, company has, uh, won the contract previously. And so instead of letting the land just sit there and not generate anything for the county, uh, we do, um, bid off the hunting rights for, uh, a profit for the county.
On the other side, the other side of the woods, there is farmland, and that's also leased out every year. Uh, I, I don't know if I have the total acres, seven, eight hundred acres total, I guess there's two or three hundred acres of woodland that we've been told by the state foresters we should forest soon, cut. But, um, nonetheless, it's hunt, used for hunting rights right now. And, um, actually Secretary Bolton has asked that we start looking at using some of this land for different, different purposes. So we are now working with Parks and Recreation to find out what the best use for that land is. But it was purchased through Program Open Space money, and like I say, it's gotta be at least 10, 15 years ago now, uh, it was bought.
Councilman Dunn?
So as a clarification, this was Open Space program?
Yes.
Mr. President? If, if you care for further...
Has it been leased every year, the last 10 years?
Yes, it has been.
Yes.
And the lease says that, um, it's really a three-year, uh, but after next year, it's year-to-year?
It's, it's a, it, it's, the first year, the price is bid, and then we negotiate, they have the option, us and them have the option to renew for two more years with a negotiated price.
Okay. And what are the future plans for this property? Is there any? Cause I, I remember you were talking about some...
That's what we're working on now at this point in time, so with Secretary Bolton from DNR.
Is this the area that you were talking about, campground or?
That's, well, not, the, this hunting parcel is not.
That's agricultural land, yes.
But this area, though?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, but the, the hunting property part is the one that has the forest on, that we have been recommended to look in the future, eh, in the near future, to, um, do some selective cutting because the, the wood is at its peak at the moment. And so we are investigating that as well.
So that revenue would come back to the county?
Yes.
Actually, because of the market price right now for timber is not the greatest, we've been hoping, that's why we're going with these year-to-year leases, so that we can go ahead and stop it at any time and go ahead and timber the property.
Mr. Kramer, you have a comment?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The, the property was purchased back in the eighties. Uh, it was formerly known as the Hershey Property. It was a farm that had been owned by Tom Hershey. I don't remember who purchased, who owned it prior to that. Uh, the Department of Natural Resources was contacted when this property became available, and, uh, the secretary and his key personnel came down and viewed it with our then Director of Recreation and Parks. And the state saw that it was a, a magnificent opportunity to become a, a future park. The river at that point is, uh, is deep, it's deep water on that side, makes, uh, it would, it would make an excellent location for a marina as part of a large, um, community park. As Mr. Culver has said, the property on the right-hand side of the road, if you're going down towards Whitehaven, is, is a very, very large, uh, mature pine forest, which, uh, has been hunted every year, uh, since we've owned it, so it's been in excess of 30 years. As well as, as Mr. Culver said, the, uh, the farmland on the left-hand side or the riverside of, of 352 has, uh, has been farmed. Uh, why did the county purchase it? Oh, I should say that the, all of the money for that purchase came from the state side of Program Open Space. Program Open Space has two parts. Um, the state keeps some of the money and, and, well, when there was a Program Open Space, there was practically none now, as most of you know. But when the, when the Department of Natural Resources saw that, just as with the, uh, property that is now the Henry Parker Sports Complex, both of those parcels were purchased many, many years apart. But, uh, they were purchased with money from the state side of Program Open Space, so there was, there was no county money from Program Open Space needed. In fact, there was no county money at all for, needed for the Pirate's Wharf Park because the state saw it as such a, a tremendous future park. The county council accepted the purchase with the condition that the land be, put it in a land bank, so to speak, because the county was not in a position then, uh, nor has it been since, to, to, to develop that property. But its purpose, Mr. Kilmer, was for a, for a future park.
Is, is there anything that prevents the county from selling that land or disposing of it in any way?
Since it was purchased with Program Open Space, if the county were to sell the land, they would have to have the approval of the Department of Natural Resources before doing it. And any proceeds from the sale would have to be used for the purchase of additional land, substitute land, uh, for Open Space purposes. There are, because it was purchased with the state side of Open Space money, there very well may be other, uh, criteria as well.
Any other questions from council? Any other comments? No? Okay.
I have one. What's, what's the total amount of property that we're talking about in that area?
The size of farm?
Some, I believe it's between 300 and 400 acres, including the till land and the...
Maybe a little bit more than that, yeah, actually.
It may be, it may be.
Two hundred and some in woodland, and I believe there's 150 to 200 on, on the other side.
And there's actually a third source of income, which is a rental house that's on the property?
Yes.
There is a rental house on the property, yes.
So, and those are all three budgeted in the, um, Wreckin' Parks budget every year that we budget for these revenue streams to help offset the costs of Wreckin' Parks.
I mean, just to clarify, I wasn't criticizing the renting of the land, I was, you know, checking to clarify exactly what's going on here.
No, but it, it has been a revenue stream for Wreckin' Parks, um, basically since it arrived on our, on our, as our land.
The county would not be held to this, of course, but at, at that time, um, the, the mature timber was of, of an age to be timbered back then as well. Um, and it was the county's intent, that was that county council, that when any timber proceeds would be set aside in an escrow account for the future development of the park, cause those timber proceeds could be substantial. But that was the thinking then, this, a, a future council, now a future executive or current executive would not be bound by that.
Right. Yeah, I, and I think that the licensing, the licensing fee is, is a good fee within, you know, within the, um, parameters of what's being asked for deer hunting, uh, charges, so I think it's good. It's a good win. Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 148, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
We have a public, public hearing for Resolution 149, 2015. Notices hereby given in compliance with Chapter 22 of the Wycompo County Code and Local Government Article, Section 10-Dash-312 of the Annotated Code of Maryland, that the County Council of Wycompo County, Maryland, will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting in the Council Chambers, Government Office Building, Salisbury, Maryland, on Tuesday, September 15th, 2015, commencing at 10:30 a.m. The county council proposes to consider a second amendment to the lease agreement between Wycompo County, Maryland, and the Bayland Aviation, Inc., in which Bayland Aviation proposes to renew the lease agreement with Wycompo County for property involved by Mason, improved by Masonry Block, one-story office building measuring approximately 65 by 50 feet, now designated as the FBO Bayland GA Terminal, Building 21, on the airport layout plan, which was prepared by Delta Airport Consultants dated November 2001, to be used for conducting a flight, training, aircraft rental, and charter service, and serve as the general aviation terminal for the convenience of the residents of the county and businesses and visitors of the Salisbury Ocean City Wycompo Regional Airport. The proposed lease renewal term is for 10 years. The rental shall be as set forth in the lease agreement with an escalation based on the Consumer Price Index, and a copy of the lease is available in the Department of Law.
At this time, we'll open the floor to the public for Resolution 149, 2015. If you have comments you'd like to make, uh, please come to the podium, state your name. Seeing none, that closes the, uh, the public hearing for Resolution 149, 2015. Entertained a motion from council to accept Resolution 149, 2015?
So move.
Second? Any discussion?
Council President, I went through the Second Amendment to the lease agreement, and everywhere it said Airport Commission, I changed it to Wycompo County, Maryland.
Thank you. That was, that was one question. Good. All right. No questions, council?
This was, uh, put out for bid, of course, and, uh, or was it just a renewal?
Questions for the, the airport manager.
No, it was not put out to bid because, uh, uh, Bayland has been the, has been the tenant for 40 years, goes back much further than the 1980s indicated.
Uh, John, it wasn't put out to bid because the lease under which Bayland was already operating, uh, contained an option for them to extend. So we're extending the lease that was already in full force and effect.
And, and I'm sorry, wait a minute, I don't see what the previous, uh, amount of the lease was, uh, in our, uh, brief information. Do you have that information, Bob?
Mr. Bryant, you can certainly join us, please.
Thank you. I believe this was also, uh, approved by the Airport Commission prior to us making the change in terms of authority.
I was distracted. The, the question that you asked again, John...
The previous lease amount?
The previous lease amendment, uh, the first lease amendment, um, went into...
The one that was done 10 years ago?
Correct. Was, uh, was a negotiated agreement, uh, between, at the time, the Airport Commission, also representatives of the county administration, um, extended, uh, or created a new lease that, um, identified services that Bayland Aviation would provide, uh, to the community, and all parties were in agreement with that.
Uh, you don't know the amount, though?
The amount?
Yes.
Uh, Bayland Aviation pays a rental fee on the terminal building. They do not pay any percentage of gross revenues on any of the services that they provide, with the exception of a fuel flowage fee.
Do you know the amount?
The...
The dollar amount?
The dollar amount on what they...
On the previous, ten, that was done 10 years ago?
Oh, oh, the previous 10 years, yes. Um, that was $1,350 per month on the lease of the General Aviation Terminal Building.
So that was 3,000 square feet? And what was it, 1,350 dollars?
Correct, per month.
And, uh, that street...
Over, over a period of 10 years, which generated 56,700 dollars?
It's gone up 150 dollars in 10 years, uh, basically with the new lease. And, uh, we're 3,000 square feet. Um, that sounds, you know, not, not knowing that much about the rental market in our community, but, uh, about, uh, I, I would suspect that it runs about 8 dollars a square foot, uh, if we do the numbers on it, which sounds, uh, relatively low. I know it's hard to find a tenant for this type of building, but we, we also did a lot of renovation work out there also.
Yes, yes. We did approximately 109,000 dollars of renovation work on the building. Bayland Aviation operates in an industry that is certainly faced with challenges, um, today. Contractually, as Maureen, um, mentioned, uh, Bayland Aviation is contractually obligated to provide aircraft fuel services, flight training, and air charter services, which all the indicators that I follow, which are available through a number of sources, are at the very best, uh, showing flat growth. Some of those sources that we follow are showing negative growth. Um, in my opinion, the rent that was, um, negotiated was a trade-off in ensuring that some of these contractual obligations are still available at the airport.
If I could, John, the, the, I understand that you're looking at the square footage and, and looking at quote-unquote "a market rent." Uh, but really what Bayland Aviation is doing is, is they, they have contractual services that they have to provide. So the, the rent that they pay has to do with the profitability, if you will, uh, of the services that they have to provide. And, and what Bob is saying is that profitability, uh, of businesses associated with General Aviation have declined rather distinctly over the past decade. So it really, you really, you really can't look at it as a, as a market rental.
Sure.
It's really what, what a business feels they can bid to occupy and provide the services to the airport, and there are services that are required at the airport.
Good. Thank you.
Any other Council comments? How did you come up with the increase to be the CPI? Because the CPI is almost miniscule, I mean, it's almost nonexistent nowadays. And, you know, I'm afraid that, you know, it's not a very good calibration, I mean, it's almost flat.
Recall that, 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 again, this was an option that was embedded in the existing lease. So there wasn't a whole lot of negotiation taking place. Bayland had an option that they could exercise to extend the lease on the terms that were negotiated in 2001, whenever, so.
I understand, I just thought that if you were changing, while you're in the middle of changing the rate, you might have considered changing the qualifier of a CPI increase.
Well, I would, I would suspect that in 2001, a CPI escalator was probably viewed as a pretty good escalator to use.
Right, back then.
Might not be now, but again, this is based on an option that they had in the existing lease. There's really not a whole lot to negotiate, they had an option. So they had an option to extend on certain terms, and they extended.
I'm a little confused by that. I mean, you say they had an option, but you're changing the rates as far as what the leasing amount's going to be, I would have thought maybe we might have considered changing the rates of the annual increase.
The, the, the option stipulated what the terms of the rental increase would be if the option was extended. It's not unusual at all on a commercial lease to say, you know, I've got the option to extend, you know, four ti, you know, I have four options at five years, and the rent will escalate based on the CPI. It's very typical on a commercial lease.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of Resolution 149, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carry, resolution passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
On the agenda, we are now in, make sure, because we skipped around some, want to make sure we don't leave anything out. Mrs. Howarth, you're done, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments. I would like to recognize Delegate Carl Anderson, glad to have you here. Thank you. Saw you last night as well. Yeah, been busy. We would like to open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please go to the podium. Dr. Fredrickson, how are you?
Fantastic. Yourself?
Fine, good to see you.
I apologize, I'm John Fredrickson, Superintendent of State, Schools, Wycomico County, and a resident of Salisbury, and I just want to say thank you to the council and to the county executive for their support for our mentoring program. This means that a large number of kids are going to get a chance to have positive interactions on a regular basis, whether it's weekly or bi-weekly or monthly, however that works out. To be able to talk with someone and to see how they made it in life, how did they succeed, and this is going to be huge in terms of helping our kids succeed in school and graduate and be prepared for college and career. Thank you very much, I really appreciate your help, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Fredrickson. Any other public comments? Seeing none, Council comments. Councilman Doug?
I'd like to thank everyone that attended the meeting today. These meetings are important, and people take time out of their personal schedule to attend, so that's, that's great. I'd also like to thank everyone that attended the hearing last Thursday for the elected school board. I think it was a decent turnout, it was very impressive, so I look forward to the future meetings. I think President Cannon will probably relay the dates on that. Last week, I mentioned something about an upcoming event that's coming on this week, Delmarva Bike Week. I, I participate, and Dr. Fredrickson might, he told me one time he had a Harley, so he might be participating, but...
A lot of bikes stay alive.
But, and one thing I want to point out is, there's going to be a lot of bikes around here, 80,000, 100,000, maybe even more, going through. You might hear something about Delmarva Bike Week and Ocean City Bike Fest, it's pretty much the same thing, they're both connected. You are going to see a lot of bikes, and just because it says Delmarva Bike Week doesn't mean that you can't go to Winter Place Park or the Delmarva Shorebird Stadium to look at the vendors, there's a lot going on there, so keep your eyes and ears open for the motorcyclists out there, and stay safe. It begins September 17th, Bob, September 17th to 20th, so that'd be Thursday through Sunday, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Doug. Council comments? Councilman Hall?
I'd like the, to express the council's sympathy for Mike Delano on the loss of his daughter and his family, and will keep him and his family in our prayers, thank you.
Councilman Kilmer?
I just want to thank everybody who came out for the elected school board hearing that we had, we have three more coming up. I won't take John's thunder, I'll let him in.
Go ahead.
But the next one's in Delmar, a week from today, the 22nd, at 6:00 p.m. at Delmar Elementary. I see, is it, is it now the deputy mayor of Delmar, Bunky Luffman? Are there any other deputy mayors named Bunky across the state of Maryland, or do we have the only one here? All right, all right. So we appreciate seeing you here, and we, we count on a lot of Delmar residents showing up next, next Tuesday, and I'm looking forward to Heritage Days in Sharp Town coming up this Saturday, so I'll see, hopefully see a lot of people along the parade route there. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other Council comments? Under Presidential comments, I would like to wish the best to Chief Steve White in Parsonsburg. He has been ill, and we all know how much he has contributed, not only to Parsonsburg, but to Wycomico County. He has been a stellar performer, he spent 38 years at the Parsonsburg Volunteer Fire Company, 20 years on and off as chief, and it's not an easy task, it's not an easy task at all. He's past president of the company and past president of the Chiefs Association, served on many committees, including the LoSAP Committee, which was so important for all, all the firefighters, not only in Wycomico County, but in the state of Maryland, and he also served on the Maryland State Firemen's Association Committee. Truly dedicated his life to fire service, and we wish him the best. He's a good friend, and we certainly wish him well. In addition to that, as, as Councilman Kilmer said, September 22nd will be our Board of Education public hearing to decide what we would like to do as far as the Board of Education's concerned, elected-appointed hybrid. I think we had a very good turnout at the civic center, despite the fact, I believe it was the first night of Thursday Night Football. But anyway, we did have a good turnout. This is September 22nd at Delmar Elementary, we're looking for more input from everyone, we know that Delmar, the Delmar community always has a lot of input when it comes to education, so I'm looking forward to that very much. And something I found out the other day, September 19th is Thank a Police Officer Day. I sort of ran into this accidentally online, and I'm surprised it isn't promoted more. So September 19th is Thank a Police Officer Day, so make sure you, you participate. That being said, that concludes Presidential comments, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the legislative session so that we can go into open work session followed by a closed work session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.